Good afternoon. The rule development workshop for September 10th, 2019 is now in session. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belkner?
Present.
Mrs. McDougall?
Present.
Mrs. Neskovic?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present.
And Mrs. Gil.
Present.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Okay, we have six policies for the rule development workshop and will be the public's first opportunity for public comment. These policies will come back for action on the September 24th, 2019 school board meeting. An initial discussion and review took place at the work session held on August 27th, 2019. Chris Moore, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, will provide us the executive summary for the proposed revisions to Board Policy 2260.01, Non-Discrimination Grievance Procedure. Ms. Moore.
Hey, good morning, afternoon. This policy is being revised to clarify the procedures regarding the process a student will go through to file a complaint alleging harassment or discrimination under Title IX Education Amendment of 1972, which prohibits gender discrimination in public education. Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, which prohibits discrimination against students with a disability, and/or the Americans with Disabilities Act of 2008, and the appeal of any determination regarding that complaint. The title of this policy is proposed to change from "Non-Discrimination Grievance Procedure" to "Anti-Harassment and Non-Discrimination Appeal Procedures," in order to more accurately identify the purpose of the policy. Other changes include setting forth the school compliance officers and the district compliance officers restating the responsibilities with respect to the maintenance of written complaints, and other changes in compliance with the applicable federal and Florida law have also been proposed. These proposed revisions encompass the suggestive language of NEOL.
Board members, do you have any questions or comments before I ask the -- while you're looking? Is there anyone here who has come to speak to Board Policy 2260.01, Non-Discrimination Grievance Procedure? Is there anyone who has come to speak to Board Policy 2260.01, Non-Discrimination Grievance Procedure? Moving on, Ms. Moore, will you please provide us the summary of revisions for Board Policy 2431, Interscholastic Athletics?
This policy is being revised to include language that mandates heart screenings to assist in identifying any student who may be at risk of a cardiac condition. Particular areas of revision include the following: Requires BPS students will now be required to have an ECG screening before they can participate in athletics, and must complete the ECG consent opt-out form each year. That form has actually been renamed "Cardiology Report/Electrocardiogram," in addition to the other forms in their annual athletic package. These proposed revisions encompass the suggestive language of NEOL, although NEOL does not have suggestive language surrounding the ECG, new language.
I know we had extensive conversation about this one last workshop. Does any board member have any questions or comments?
I do.
Ms. Belkner?
The -- I saw the form attached.
We have a new one?
Newest form?
The one that was attached yesterday.
This one is newer than that, as in 30 minutes ago.
Oh.
Wow.
All right.
So it is officially hot off the presses.
We keep making revisions to make it more clear.
Oh, good.
There you go.
Mr. Susan, is the two completed by licensed physician or practitioner?
Practitioner.
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 Does that satisfy your concerns?
That's the language that's in the statute.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, what we were trying to avoid, if we see it happening, we might have to tighten it up even further, but I think this gets to the letter of the law. Thank you.
It's a day. It's quite a day.
So, um, this form is only going to be submitted if they go someplace other than a "Who We Play For" screening.
This is the form we're going to want from all athletes.
So here is my question. When both of my children went through the screening process, I received an email saying they are low-risk, and it had a copy of the ECG on there. I printed that email and submitted it with my son's athletic packet with his physical. How does this get completed?
This is going to have to be completed by either, and we'd have to, I'll be frank, we'd have to work with "Who We Play For" to figure out how they would get this form completed for their, as a vendor, for the people that get their ECGs through them. When we worked with risk management and with legal, we need to either have cleared or not cleared. We can't put a student who's at-risk out on the field for any length of time acknowledging that we're putting a student who's at-risk out on a field to play or practice or condition. So, um, that's what started the determination that we were going to have two categories. They're either cleared or not cleared, and we're going to have to work with "Who We Play For" to say, "This is the form that we need our students to turn into their athletic directors. How can you get this to the parents? How can you get this to us? How can you get this to the A.D.s?"
What if they go to, they don't go through "Who We Play For"?
Then this form is applicable. This is the form.
How do they get, who gives them this form?
The athletic director.
Okay. I'm just checking.
And it'll also be posted on our website under the forms.
Oh, good.
So the parents can just download it from there if they want.
I, maybe I'm wrong. I feel like I've gotten the yellow, is it yellow or blue, from the doctor for your regular physical?
Follow-up.
No, 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 no. For the regular physicals. Is it a yellow form? Is it a blue form?
It depends on what the A.D. copied it on.
I'm worried.
But yes, it would be yellow or blue.
Yeah, anyway, let's just say the regular physical is a yellow form. I feel like I've gotten that from the doctor's office.
The yellow form, yeah, the yellow form, it normally has a yellow cover sheet. You're correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I feel like I haven't brought that to our doctor before for my kids, but he actually has them there. Is that, am I remembering that incorrectly?
Um, it could have either come from the school, or a lot of the physicians' offices do have it in their office.
A lot of pediatricians around here. That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah.
So can we, how do we do, how do?
We will, we can distribute this far and wide. We, us, I don't think it's going to be an issue of us getting the, um, the form out there. I think that the only complication I see is, is how, "Who We Play For" is going to get it completed for the group of kids that they work with. I don't think the physicians are going to have a problem with it. I don't think the A.D.s are going to have a problem with it. I don't think getting it out there is going to be a problem. It's just going to change the way of the work for "Who We Play For" to meet our expectations.
Okay, so compare, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Comparing, one second, Ms. Campbell, is, yes, the door, it should be open?
It should be open, yeah.
Can somebody open that?
There should be a door slot over there.
Sorry. That's okay. So comparing this one to the one, the last new one, um, this adds an extra box up here that actually would take care of students who go through "Who We Play For." The second box, which says, "An ECG screening has been completed and my child is entered for participation in either middle school or high school athletics."
If they have a previous screening on file, that's the intent of that box.
Okay.
So if they had a screening in seventh grade, they don't have to have it again in eighth grade. They can check that box. They've been cleared. It's on file.
Okay, but that would only be, so if, so.
Mm-hmm.
If I, yeah, that, I don't know if that was clear. Because, because let's say I had, I sent my, I had my child do their, let's say this was the form for this current year, and my child went to one of the "Who We Play For" screenings in July, I would probably check that.
That box?
Yeah. But you're saying you want something more than that?
I, I will, I will tell you, I'm all about the parental responsibility of that, and that would also eliminate our, our question about how "Who We Play For" would, um, uh, would get this information to the schools in this way, because that information goes to the parents where it needs to go, and then this form goes to the A.D. where it needs to go, and the A.D. doesn't need to get involved in medical decisions. And so, yeah, I, I think that makes sense, the exact way you're reading it. It wasn't that way in my head, but I think that makes sense.
I'm still confused. I don't, maybe we're confused about different things. If someone had one done two years ago. That's the box they check? But then the bottom doesn't let me fill it out?
Were they in high school or middle school at the time?
Okay, they're a freshman, they got it done their freshman year, and now they're a junior, and this form gets in their packet. What do they check?
Say that one more time for me.
The kid had it done his freshman year. He was cleared.
Yeah.
And now he's a junior, and this has been handed out in his packet again.
The middle one.
So he checks the middle one.
Mm-hmm. And checks high school.
And checks high school, but then, if I was a parent, I would feel like I would still need the doctor to sign off every year below.
So you're saying, if you've completed one, you don't need to fill out below?
But the third one says findings, the following represents the findings.
You know what we need to do? We just need to raise that box over that third bullet.
I would argue to raise the box all the way up and put those checks below, just so that if somebody wanted to try to get to the, um, that they wanted to decline it, that they have to read through the whole form before they get to it.
Like choose one of the three below.
It wasn't a box before, but it was above. Is there some, is there a reason why we moved it down?
Oh, the cardiac clearance part?
Yes. I think it's good to put it in a box.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Everything we did was to try to make it a little bit clearer and a little bit easier to understand, and right up until, like you said, 30 minutes ago. So we're open to any suggestions you have. We want it to be easy for parents to understand what we're asking for.
That middle one, it needs like an asterisk or something that says you don't, you don't need to do it again, or below is only for the third one, or is something?
No, right.
I also think that if you move the two, like, I think ECG screening has been completed, my child has been cleared for participation, and then give you a colon, and then move those two to either check, I don't like how it runs together, middle school or high school, like move them down? Does that make sense? Just separate?
Yeah, but that doesn't still clarify.
It doesn't clarify, but, but I'm also looking in our policy, I know this policy, we're beating it to death. I, it gets confusing, so it, for me anyhow, maybe it's just me. We talk about, "Any student wanting to participate in middle school or high school athletics must complete the cardiology report, actual ECG, each year as part of the student's athletic packet." And then the next "I" underneath it, this is under B, says, "Prior to participating in his first athletic sport, middle school again, so participate in his first athletic sport in high school," or, let me see, any school, so, okay, so, I think it's confusing. We're not asking them to have it every year, but, so how do we make that clear in our policy? Because I'm, I'm almost reading that this policy makes it sound like they need to have it every year.
That was our effort, I can, I understand where you're coming from. That was our effort for those parents who declined to continually have the form in front of them, so they can go, "I decline, but, you know what, maybe this year I do it."
Okay.
"I decline, but maybe this year I do it." So.
Could we get, could we make that, so, you know, I guess, I think we wanted it seventh and tenth, is that what we wanted?
We didn't, we didn't want to say a grade.
Eight grades.
Because there are too many variables.
Okay.
Too many variables to take into consideration.
Middle school and high school.
So we said, "Before you play your first sport in middle school, and again, before you play your first sport in high school."
Okay. Do we add, or am I just making this complicated? And if you have declined in the past, we're asking you to fill out this form again. I don't know if we want to do that. I'm just asking the question.
I think that's automatic if we add this to the packet.
Must be completed annually or something? You think so?
Yeah, I think, well, it says they must complete the form each year, so that's, that's this, but I, I do think perhaps, as I think Tina referenced, an asterisk or something on, on the middle.
Mm-hmm.
That indicates if there is a current, um, ECG on file, the cardiac clearance portion doesn't have to be completed.
That makes sense.
Something along those lines?
Yeah.
And then if we can move all those boxes underneath that big box and put the opt-out as the last option?
Yeah.
I don't think that needs to be moved underneath the big box, but I do think decline should be the last option, not the first option.
And do you think, um, okay.
If you put it underneath there, I would never get down there. I would see all these parts for the doctor.
Do you mean the decline at the very, very bottom?
What?
Decline at the very, very bottom? Oh, I think that's.
Well, she's, they're now saying that they want to keep it at the top.
The last box.
Maybe the last box.
Like slip the three boxes.
But then you got to, you need to put the box that the doctors kind of fill out underneath the third one. It's got to stay together.
So maybe decline goes to the bottom.
To the very, very bottom, down here.
Right? But the other ones stay at the top, like, "I've had an EEG/ECG done," or, "My doctor's going to do it here," or, "Oh, I keep going, I can decline."
Very, very bottom decline.
Or, "I can decline."
And make the box encompassing all three of those options? Or no?
I don't know how you do that.
No, I don't, I don't think I would do that.
No, I think we just said, drop that one piece down to the bottom.
Yeah, that makes, everything makes perfect sense, what you guys just said.
Put it in really small font.
Size four.
Do you know, to clarify, between the ECG box and the following represents the findings is an or, especially if you put decline at the bottom.
Or not.
Check one.
Yeah, check one, check one below, right? Yeah. Do we want to play with this wording a little bit?
Yes, we do. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to play with the wording under the third box. Instead of the following represents the findings, we're going to make that more clear as well. But we'll add, um, if there's a current cardiac clearance on file, the cardiac clearance does not need to be completed again, um, and we'll play with that wording. Or, and then we'll play with the wording of the following represents the findings, because I think that's what's kind of clunky, too, and then move the.
More like, "I choose to have my child, and here's the results," kind of.
Yeah, yeah, and then we'll choose, we'll move the "I decline" all the way to the very, very, very bottom.
That, just clarifying, in case we didn't say clearly, the second, what's currently the second box, which will be the first box, right?
Yeah.
"ECG screening has been completed for my child, and my child has been cleared for participation somewhere, and it's on file with the school." I think that needs to be clear, that it's already, they already have it, because if you've already had it done, but the school does have it, you need to know that you've got to get it to them some shape.
Practically, we have to have our A.D.s checked. Yeah.
Yeah, because if we don't have it, you need to decline.
But that's one more step, they're going to have to go back. I know you checked this box, but we don't really have it.
Right. That's, that is, we do that every year for every sport, so that's not going to be an issue.
But just make it so that they do it.
Well, not for every sport, but for every athlete.
So what if my child has one, um, in ninth grade at Titusville High School, and then in 10th grade goes to Astronon High School? Is that A.D. going to have access to the information from Titusville High School?
They are. I know that Bill has been working with ET. All of those forms are documented for, for the A.D.s as they go back and forth, and again, now, because of the way we did this, we're not transferring medical data back and forth. We're just saying, "There's a cardiac clearance on file." And it's either cleared or not cleared, and it leaves, it leaves all of that medical information in the hands of the family.
So I have a concern about the cleared or not cleared portion.
Okay.
And I'm trying to find the email that you sent me with the numbers, the spreadsheet.
Okay.
If I recall correctly, there were like 100, that was the last, 100 students that came in as.
At risk. Um, Bill has been working on those. Matter of fact, we left a meeting and Bill immediately began working on those. He called all of the A.D.s to find out which one of them were fall sports, because some of those students were just getting ready for winter sports. Which one of them had already had follow-ups? Which one of them were scheduled to have follow-ups? And narrowed it down to 13 students. Those 13 students, he sent to Evan, and Evan had all of their, uh, ECGs re-looked at to see if any of them could be cleared a second time by, um, by a physician at Nemours. At that point, we had a hurricane. We came back, and one of the things, and I'll have Bill speak to this a little bit, I said, "Bill, you need to get with 'Who We Play For' and figure out if there's any way we can help these 13 kids." And this is where I think we're kind of tiptoeing on getting too involved in the healthcare of students, but we've started this, so let's finish it. Is there any way we can get these 13 kids cleared in time for their fall athletics? And I, I'm sorry, I don't have an update today on that.
So I, I've talked with Evan several times, and their doctor, I'm not asking about the line over in Nemours, he reread them, and the discussion that we had was that, you know, they could maybe give him another month, but the discussion we had, we want to try to stay as consistent as we can, so he reached out.
I'm going to jump in there.
Yeah.
And it's really not about consistency. It, it's about, and Mark Langford was here, and I don't know if any wants to speak to it, if a student is at-risk, and we allow them to go out and condition and run and practice and play, and, exactly, that's not something we can do, so.
Consistency is part of it, but go ahead.
Yeah, the cleared or not cleared is to protect the district on liability. If we have on record a file that says "at-risk," and the child is sent out to do, um, two-a-days, getting ready for football, and something happens, then we can be held at liability because we have on file that that child was at-risk, and a parent, grandparent, someone could say, "We pushed them harder than we needed to, you know." So for the protection of the district, as well as the students, because frankly, we don't want a child that's at-risk not to get checked out and be playing, we would, we prefer the clear, that a physician of some type says, "Yes, they're good to play," or "No, they're not." And that also encourages those who get in at-risk to go get checked out further, which is, I think, where we really want this to go, is that a child with a problem is getting treated if it's needed.
So did we have any conversation with the pediatric cardiologists on this, or was that just a decision that we made internally based on legal and risk management?
It's a decision made internally on, on risk management and managing liability. They have, "Who We Play For" has a cardiologist they use. There are people who send them to their own doctors and own cardiologists. To try and talk to all of them would be very difficult, and my guess would be, they could all have a different interpretation of how you treat at-risk. So our focus was, which should always be, fiduciary duty to the school district and taxpayers.
I, I agree with our focus, and certainly that needs to be our focus at all times, but the reason I ask it is because we are receiving information from pediatric cardiologists that is interpreting an ECG, and that, my understanding is, that that pediatric cardiologist or those pediatric cardiologists that are interpreting the initial ECG that are saying there might be something going on here, they're saying, "We just want to make sure that you look into it deeper. We're not saying that you're at-risk." So my concern is that we are going to put students in a situation where, because we chose to make a decision internally, as opposed to speaking with the people that are providing that interpretation on the ECG and understanding what that interpretation means, we could potentially be negatively impacting students.
You're then asking an A.D. or someone in risk management to make medical decisions. We're not qualified.
I'm not. I'm asking our staff to understand what the intent of the determination on the initial ECG read is. I think that's two very different things.
Can I, I'm going to ask the second question, because we had an at-risk finding on the 13 students. The 13 students went back and had a rereading.
Right.
To see if any of them, if that doctor felt comfortable for, to clear any of them. That was the purpose of the reread. Are you comfortable, as a cardiologist, clearing them right now based on what you, you see to play? And the finding was?
So that wasn't exactly the language I think put the hurricane stuff.
That was the, that was the language I passed on Bill.
Yeah, so I, maybe I didn't communicate it enough, but basically, we went to them and said, "After hearing from y'all that we didn't want to pull kids unnecessarily into sports, is it possible to create a one-month grace period for kids with minor, you know, who have some ECG?" So I called the chief of pediatric cardiologists in Nemours to be advised from medical experts on how we should look forward. He said, "The ECGs he's read, he's willing to review them, and if medically appropriate, he would have one month grace period." And so he reviewed all 13 of those and gave a one-month grace period. So I think with the hurricane, maybe I didn't communicate it well.
As your risk manager, that one-month grace period, if something goes wrong with that child, and especially when you're talking beginning of the year and you have students doing two-a-days for football, we will be liable for that child, knowing we, us knowing they're at-risk and, and working them. That is why, as your risk managers, we're saying, "You really need a, they're cleared for play." Maybe we need to start this process much earlier than we did this year, but we, we don't want something to happen to the child in that one-month grace period if the cardiologist thinks there's a problem. Because it's my child, I wouldn't want them playing until I got them checked out.
Yeah, my, my purpose for asking the question the way I did was, I, I figured if the cardiologist from Nemours who looked at that screening not once but twice was willing to say, "Yeah, I'd clear them," then I, we have a whole different conversation. And I was trying to figure out if he was willing to do that, or if he was going to say, "No, this child needs more testing." It was never my intent to get a month grace period because from the start, that concerned me. So I apologize if that information isn't available to you.
So these 13 students are not allowed to play sports or not until they're cleared?
Bill, yeah, give it up there.
Well, not all of them, some of them, I think two have been cleared, but not all of them have their 90 days up yet. They're, they're all sports.
But we never agreed to the 90 days. I don't know why we keep bringing up the 90 days. They don't play if they're not cleared.
Bill, what, what's the holdup on these kids just going and getting cleared? Is it money? Is it, I mean, you seem to kind of know who they are to a degree of schools, like.
We know exactly who they are and where they are.
Yeah, some of them it could be, and Evan reached out to them, and there's some resources that he gave with the A.D.s. I can't tell you what every 13 of those parents, because I don't know what their names specifically are, but, you know, whether it's just lackadaisical or putting it off, I don't know exactly for each one of those.
And these kids are all supposed to be playing ball sports right now, but they're?
These are the ones that we're centered on, correct?
It's not finance? It's?
Some could be. Yeah, but I don't know.
We're speculating at this point.
Yeah, I don't want to give information I'm not sure about.
Evan, do you guys, do you guys have opportunities if these kids were able to make it to Orlando to get cleared? Is there, like, where, how, where's the holdup? Like, do we just get these 11 kids to get opportunities in Orlando and go get it done? How do we do that? I think, so, they can go to Shepherd's Hope if there's an issue with finances. That is legitimately a concern now, too, that is truly, you know, in the worst-case scenario, they can't afford to sit on the couch. We need to figure out and through that kid, and hopefully we'll have an answer assuming that we're held in line, because that's what we committed to, but it's not set up where that can happen. But you said Shepherd's? Shepherd's Hope has that set up, and they're processing for. So if you, so if I, if 11 kids just showed up at Shepherd's Hope tomorrow at 11 o'clock in the morning? Yes, everybody can see for free, can be seen for free with pediatric cardiologists or for these costs. Do they have requirements? Do they have forms? I mean, these kids just show up and say, "Hey, I don't have enough money to go to." They have to talk and be, I'll schedule Shepherd's Hope, basically, to prove they're fine. I don't know how we work with the, you know, Happen Health and the rest of them, especially Nemours, to make sure the kids are sharp.
So I asked Bill to, um.
To reach out and, and see if we can get something set up for each of those 13?
Yeah.
I, I thought you guys were already working on it together?
No, we were, we were.
Okay, thank you.
Did you, I, this is out of order from public comment, but did you have something in reference to this?
The question was, is they didn't know where the 30 days came from, and it's directly stated in the email that I received when my child was classified as follow-up. So it's in the, I'm going to have a copy.
"Who We Play For"?
A 30-day or a 90-day?
Right, I understand, and that's a lot of the confusion is, because I've talked a lot about A.D.s and a lot of the coaches, the confusion is, is it mandatory right now? No, not until winter. As of now, you know, it's, it's, it's a gray area, so it's, so there's a lot of miscommunication and misunderstanding and confusion, and, yes, it was given from the email received from "Who We Play For." That's where the 30 days come from. You speak with the schools, and they say, "Well, it's not mandatory. It's not official until winter." So I would be surprised to hear about the kids right now that are not being allowed to play, because that was not my understanding as a parent either, is that it wasn't going to be a final mandatory, or, yeah, it was all.
Your child is a, was tied as at-risk or something?
Follow-up, yes.
Follow-up, that's the lowest of the three?
No, that's the middle. It's low, and then follow-up, and then high.
But I remember your, your child's had a cardiac issue before that you had already known about.
My daughter, my, my first child had open heart surgery. My second child, I had screened voluntarily last year when it kind of was with the sports physicals, came back low-risk. I did it again this year because he was considering doing winter sports, and it came back as a follow-up. And so then I, being privy to all of this, immediately had him seen by his pediatrician and then by his pediatrician.
Did you speak at the last school board meeting?
Yes.
Just to be clear, that was not an email that came from us?
No, we, we, it was a 90-day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So this is, you're right, but it was 90 days.
Yeah, the 90 days, not the month, the new one, month.
Who sent an email about 30 days, then?
Oh, no. Oh, no, there was no, not about the thirty days, but about the ninety-day thing.
That came from...
That, yes.
So there's no thirty day, that was...
That was the one-month thing they were talking about with the pediatric cardiologist.
Oh, getting the extra month, which you thought was-
Right.
-a cleared or non-cleared, and they bought us an extra month.
Would I extra was a cleared or non-cleared?
Risk management says we can't do an extra month because that's not cleared. We need cleared. Were the cardiologists cleared or not cleared, or the cardiologist will only, you know?
I just wondered what Matt Whiteford said, and something along the lines of that.
I've got a couple of questions. One, the part that you added in about middle school and the high school, do we need to be...
Are you on the form?
On policy.
Back to policy. This is up here, this portion right here?
Yes, five, B, little i. Do we need to be more specific about the prior to, the concern that was brought up to me was, what if, you know, an eighth grader in March has theirs done, technically that's before high school, but he's still in middle school, and his physical would be good until the next March?
And Bill brought up that question to me.
Right, right.
And I will be, I'll be frank, and I said, "We could get into the what-ifs from now until when the cows come home." And we're not gonna meet every single family's what-if.
Right.
And so I wanted to make it really clear that it's, you know, before the first middle school sport, which would be, let's pretend, let's take that example. If the middle school sport was track, then they would be getting that clearance probably in November, December, January, for that track season. And then they would go to high school, and you're right, they may have to go and get cleared again-
Before a year's end.
-before the year's up, if they played football or cross-country, let's say. So, yeah, we tried to keep it really plain language and simple, because I didn't think we could account for every what-if that was.
The other...
I think, I think it might be okay to add a sentence that says, "And it's good at least for a year after that." So, I mean, we could play with that language if that would help that scenario. I think that's fair.
Well, if we're, my question is, if we're gonna not have a problem with it, then that's fine. But because we're leaving at this discretion of all the ADs, how are they going to interpret that? So I don't know if we need to be as specific as starting with the day after school gets out of eighth grade, or, you know, whatever, but if, but if it's gonna be okay for one that's done in the spring, to be good for that high school year, you know, or at least until they're due again for the physical, I don't know. I think...
Or if the parent's savvy enough, they could check, "I decline, because I just had it." I mean, I don't know if they would do that, but some parents might do that.
Realistically, a lot of the, say, for example, middle school sports, so seventh-grade cheerleading tryouts were at the end of the sixth-grade year. So if they're gonna try out for seventh-grade cheerleading at the end of their sixth-grade year, technically, according to this form, they're going to have to have a physical prior to trying out for cheerleading in sixth grade, for their seventh-grade cheerleading.
Yes, yes.
To try out.
Well, this is, well, but we're not pulling, we're not, we're pulling in the FHSAA cheer, I'm just wanted to, we're not talking about cheerleading at this point, we're talking about the FHSAA sports, and then the middle school basketball and track. We haven't added cheerleading into this scenario yet, so I don't wanna...
So we're not including cheerleading, band, ROTC?
At this point, it's been listed as FHSAA sports and middle school track and band. I mean, track and basketball.
Interscholastic athletics program, SWCC. Not to throw a wrench in everything, but why is cheerleading not part of that?
They're not a FHSAA interscholastic sport.
Really? They're certainly welcome. Go get one. And we haven't thrown anybody, I mean, you know, we've had a lot-
We've got a lot of our cheerleaders, a lot of our dance crew, a lot of our ROTC kids participate.
Interesting.
Which has been a great, I guess, side effect of this whole process, is it's gone county-wide, karate studios, all kinds of, you know...
Studio, that's not right word.
I think so.
Gojos.
Gojos.
I'm sorry, I'm coming from the dance music world.
Dance studios, karate gojos.
Dance studios, karate gojos.
My other question is, when this policy takes, when the policy takes effect, that is the question, you know, do we, we have said winter sports. For middle school, that's simple, because they only have two, basketball's over in October, it's track.
Through track.
But for high school, it's different, because some of them are starting, going across the break, or whatever, so do we want, and I know this means, I think, I ask Amy already, this is more than a technical change-
More than a technical change, yeah.
But do we need to put in here a date that this section will take effect? Because otherwise, it takes effect as soon as we-
Approve it.
-vote, which would be, it's on schedule for October?
Right, September twenty-fourth.
Okay, the final, okay, so September twenty-fourth, which means any sport that happens after that, this has to be in place. And are we ready for that?
Um, that's a great question, and we won't know we're ready until we do it. We have, if the form is approved, we can get out to the ADs, we can get the training in place, they understand what we're asking and what we're looking for, we can get the notification out to the parents. If, if, on September twenty-fourth, if this is approved, I absolutely think that we can have all of this communicated and in the right hands by December first. Now, I would have to turn back to my expert, Bill, and say, "When does the first tryouts, conditioning begin for the sports?" Is it October?
Yeah, it's about, I think, October, November, or twelve. There's three sports, and I think one starts the second week of October, as far as practice.
Okay, and tryouts, because they have to have all the...
Correct, right, 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 yeah. They're standard a little bit, but they're all in October.
So can we, Amy, can we amend on the twenty-fourth if we wanted to...
We have to start the whole advertising process over.
Just to take effect date, not amend the actual policy, but can we amend on our...
Could we motion to approve the policy beginning on a specific date?
That's what I was asking, motion.
Yeah, because it's not early.
It won't be in the policy.
What?
It won't be in the policy.
No, we won't be changing the policy, we'll just be making a motion to vote to put it in place, but not until...
So is that the entire policy, or just the ECG portion?
The entire policy. I mean, we're living under a current policy now, it's, I mean, if we have to extend it another thirty days so they can get their Vexon or L or whatever, it's... Do you want to check into that for us and report that?
Yeah, I mean, we, I mean, we can do that. So usually, our policies are effective upon adoption, but if the board wants to make it not effective until a date certain.
Okay. As, as we get closer, let us know what it's looking like for you all and what you recommend. I think, you know, we don't want to put everybody in a pickle, our students are sports programs, so if we have to vote to approve of the twenty-fourth to stay on that adoption schedule, but we can make a motion to make it a date specific.
So, Bill, can you put out a, you're gonna create a communication plan and list out how we're gonna communicate with the ADs, with parents, with the coaches, through Matt and through getting this, getting the board and everything out there, and then through our local medical providers? Okay?
So we'll have a plan ready for you by the twenty-fourth of how we can roll that out.
So does that work for us, because the other, our other option is to go ahead and change it, put a date in the policy-
Which is then kind of strange.
And then we have to, we're pushing this back another...
Two or three meetings.
Yeah, it'll be another six weeks or so, because we'd have to advertise, and you only have one meeting in...
October.
October, November.
Or November, one meeting.
We have two in October.
Is there any way to do what we're trying to do outside of putting it in the policy?
OxyOla doesn't have a policy.
Right. No, what I'm saying is, is that can you just tell everybody, "This is when it's going to be mandatory"?
I mean, it's, I guess the change, the challenge would be, you're violating your own policy.
Until that date, you go.
I mean, if we have a motion just to adopt it, maybe, but we're moving forward, doing the stuff now, but I think it's...
You can make it effective. You can adopt it as is and then make it effective.
Yeah, that's the...
But we can do that without having to re-advertise.
Well, some of our policies have, you know, beginning with the 2010 school year, right? And we want to get rid of that kind of stuff, because putting dates in policies is a little strange.
Bad, bad, bad business, I think, so...
Yes, so you can adopt it and make the effective date.
Okay.
So have, has there been conversation with Who We Play For about the process of completion of this form at all?
Not yet, we were still working on it thirty minutes ago.
Okay. Completely understand, I don't mean to put you on the spot with that.
Yeah.
My concern is, I just want to make sure, and technically, we're not approving anything today.
Correct.
So, but even when we approve the policy, we're not approving the form.
No, because the form under your policy is the superintendent has the authority to approve of administrative procedures and forms, so we can still make tweaks to that anytime.
Okay, so the procedures and forms that are included on the agenda, that's...
Just FYI.
Any of that can change.
Yep.
Okay.
My only concern is that the policy specifically states that the form will be completed with the form number. So if Who We Play For looks at this and says, "There is no way for us to make this work within our system to have this particular form filled out," as opposed to receiving the email results the way that parents are currently receiving them, then we may potentially have an issue.
I, I think, and I'm gonna, I'm talking out loud, that the parents who'd receive the ECG results from Who We Play For, they would pull this form, and if they were cleared, they would check that second box, "An ECG screening has been completed, and my child has been cleared to participate," and then sign the bottom.
Okay. So the Who We Play For cardiologists don't actually have to complete this one?
There is an extra form word there, see where it says, "The Cardiogel and Electrocardiogram ECG Form Form."
I'm taking out that form, if that's okay, that's just a...
That's a technical change.
Yes.
So why would you ever choose option three?
You go ahead and have your own talk for that. Okay, so say that part again. If my child went...
If you already have, if you already have an ECG report, either from, you know?
No, no, no. If, if I, if my child participates in a Who We Play For event-
Then I...
Even if, they don't have to sign this, because Who We Play For-
The email came to you.
Whether our MOU is going to the ADs, and they are gonna have records of it.
No, the email's gonna come to you, and you're going to see that your child's been cleared or not cleared, or needs follow-up.
Okay.
As a parent, we trust you to do what you know needs to be done based on that email, and you're gonna let us know, and I'm talking out loud on this. Second box, "My child's been cleared to participate," and you're signing as the parent that that is indeed what has happened.
Do we have to have it on file? Okay, but you just told me a little while ago that this is gonna have to be on file with the...
Correct, because as, as we've been talking, it's been going through my head of going, "Oh, this is how this really should be done." So this form, we've gone back and forth for probably, well, since the hurricane, going, "What, how do we make this right? How do we make this clear and easy for our schools, for our families, and to make sure that we're getting the information?" So this could either be, that middle one could either be the scenario I gave you earlier, there's already an ECG on file, we did it last year, check, done, moving on, or it could be you, as the parent, have gotten the information from Who We Play For, or, or some other entity, and you've checked that middle one, "I've got it, my child's cleared, moving on." Part of, part of this is to keep that personal medical information where it belongs in the family. And part of it is to, is to just have a consistent way for our ADs to say, "I have a cardiac clearance," or "I don't have a cardiac clearance."
And by the way, I really, really appreciate the time and effort, you guys, because I think the form, I'm, policy schmolacy, I think it down, it comes down to, this is going to be our most important piece of communication with our parents, you know? I mean, I appreciate the work you go in on the policy, too. No, don't, don't get me wrong. But this is really important, because we have had several, you know, versions of this, and I, this is good work.
After it's done with Who We Play For, does that send to us?
Well, originally, in the MOU, it is, but Who We Play For and BPS knows we have to go back and look at that MOU, because there was some stuff in there that hasn't been met on both of our sides. So, you know, it's a growth and growing experience for both of us. At this point, I would say, we don't want that medical information sent to the school.
But you want parents to provide us a copy of it, if we're gonna keep it on file?
Nope, I want a copy of this form from the parents.
So, well, just a few minutes ago, I thought we said we were gonna say, "And my thing is on file," right?
The form is on file.
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 Right.
Yeah.
So that does, that does do that.
Yeah.
So are we...
So we're just trusting that they've had it done, and that we're gonna check on that box. We're not making it, because in a physical, the doctor has to sign and release. We literally, this form says, "I don't want them to do it." Oh, it's been done, and it's fine.
Look...
Or...
We have to believe that, you know, we can't make people, we can only trust that people do the right thing. I mean, really, we can't...
Well, you can, you can print, Kevin, was it you that sent me?
Never mind, I'm aware of that. Then why don't we do that with our regular physicals? Why can't mom just check her box and say, "Oh, they had a physical that I didn't do"?
It's been done.
It's FHSAA.
It's an FHSAA report.
No, you cannot. It has to be signed by your physician.
It is signed by, it is signed by a physician or stamped by their office, one or the other.
Can I make a, just talk out loud?
So the difference, and if I'm wrong, the difference with Who We Play For and anybody else is, they don't have the results right then. Where if, even when I went to have one this summer out here at the, our Marathon Health, you know, I didn't get the result right away. A lot of the parents, if they go, "But when I went to another facility years ago, had the EKG, and, you know, sat around for about five or ten minutes, and then I got the result right then." So I think, if I'm hearing everything correctly, the, I don't wanna say loophole, but the caveat is, we have a young student that goes to Who We Play For and gets the screening done. They don't get the result until seven to ten days later, and they get an email, you know, like Patrick, you did with your, and it says, either low risk, you know, follow-up or high risk. So as Ms. Moore said, maybe, and not want to get too deep in the weeds, but because this is a big bulk of how this process is gonna work with Who We Play For, is whether they, because I understand what you're saying, the accountability, I'm just thinking as a parent, too, of two kids that play the sport, what if the kid does go with them, and he comes back at low risk, and wants to play Friday, and just says, you know, "I'm gonna opt out," you know, whereas if somebody goes to the doctor, you know, they're gonna get the results right then. So I don't know if there's a way where they sign off that they had the screening done that day, and then they have to attach the results, and then bring them, I don't know, I'm just trying to, I see what I'm hearing is, that's not tied together.
How do we even know about the thirteen ones at-risk if they're not sending us their results?
Yeah, here's, here's my concern. If we, if we attach the Who We Play For documentation to it, it's gonna say, "Low risk, moderate risk, at-risk, and anything other than no risk is not cleared." So, I mean, as long as we're comfortable with that, I'm comfortable with that, and I, and I think Penny and Mark Langendorf is comfortable with that. But if it comes back as any, any form of, of risk, unless you guys say it, you really take that chance, then it's not cleared.
I feel like we're putting our, I'm sorry, Katie, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say that I didn't bring it up because this form makes it null and void, but I had a suggestion from an assistant AD, coach, trainer, person, said, you know, if we have someone, because we had that long conversation about what do we do if it just says follow-up, and it might be nothing, you know, but they need to, that we have a parent acknowledgement and consent that says, "I acknowledge that my child is..." You know, is, you know, got this as a result, but I consent for them to go ahead and play. You know, but that makes it even more complicated. And...
We're only talking about kids that are gonna test like seven days before, right? Like this, our concern is right now that there's gonna be a kid that tests, and then he doesn't get his results back, so there's gotta be something. Which, if we're working the way that we are, that's gonna be a minimal amount of kids.
13 kids right now.
Well, right now, right? But we're working on a policy, a procedure, and everything else to capture...
So, and this is one thing that I talked about too.
Hold on, I want Penny to answer first. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, that's okay. So, well, if we leave it like this, we don't have to worry about, but if we, if we say, if you went through who we play for, then you need to attach your, where we're keeping track of your results, the way it's doing right now, then, then the suggestion was made that we have an acknowledgement and consent form for parents to say, "I acknowledge that I got my results from who we play for, and they say follow-up, but I consent for them to go ahead and play, practice, whatever, until, and then, and then that's, and then, and then we're done." But that's a lot, that seems a lot more complicated.
One, having a copy of their results puts medical information...
On file.
Handy, available, and we don't want the AD making a medical decision. What I heard when I thought y'all were finishing the conversation, I apologize, I had to call the principal. If the parent is taking sole responsibility and signing off that, "I have low risk, and I'm good with it, I clear them," that leaves us of some responsibility. My fear is still, having listened to the last six months worth of conversations with you guys, and what I heard is your concern is for the child as well, and, you know, are we putting the child at risk? I don't think it totally alleviates our liability. Having, you know, since we're requiring it, a medical, I mean, having a cardiologist who looks at the low risk rating and going, "I don't have a problem with them playing sports," is clearing them for sports, versus us looking at it and going, "Is it the right thing to do?" Because nobody on our staff is qualified to do that.
But leaving this form like this means we don't have to have that, those extra steps in not putting us in that position of having to make those calls.
Bill?
It's okay.
Let's see, what are you doing? Follow-up after you hear me here.
Go ahead.
Are we talking about, in the 13s, how many are multiples in a school? I mean, do we have like one school?
Five from Rockledge.
Yeah, there's, and again, that's just 13 that are in a follow score.
Right.
For follow-up. You know, I think, I'm just gonna be honest with you, what my concern is, and I don't have the spreadsheet that we sent Matt maybe a couple weeks ago. There's like at least 100 follow-ups. It's not just 13 kids.
Correct.
I'm just gonna talk to you as the county athletic director. So the issue, and I think we're all talking about, we don't wanna make, you know, medical decisions, is there's 100-plus kids so far already that their cardiologist is saying, "Need to have a follow-up," but they're okay to participate. So, I'm kinda getting, on one hand, it's up to the parent, if you're okay with them playing 90 days, and this is how they do it in Osceola, that's the same procedure over there, versus us saying, you know, rightfully so, that we wanna protect ourselves if something happens in that 90 days.
Bill, does their cardiologist say it's okay for them to play? Or is he just giving them grace period? That's, that was, I think, what Chris was trying to get to, is would their cardiologist say at a low risk, they're okay to play? Because if that's what he's saying, and we're getting a cleared, if he's just saying it's low risk, which is not going to say...
We have a conversation with their cardiologist to understand what that interpretation means so that we can be clear going forward.
Yeah, which is why I thought it was really specific of what I asked for.
We're trying to get that, we're trying to get that answer.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go back and we'll try to get that answer. The form we can continue to work on. And since we've all agreed that when we adopt this policy, we're gonna put it for a date when we know we're gonna have all of our ducks in a row. But I'm, I'm open to whatever suggestions you guys have for how you wanna proceed on this form.
I still don't understand the difference between us keeping, I think it's a yellow form, I keep calling it the yellow form. That's, that's signed by a doctor that says, "My kid has, doesn't have diabetes," I mean, that's medical information. We keep that, it has to be signed by a physician for my kid can go on the court. How is that any different than us having a signed piece of paper that says, "My kid has a risk, no risk, free risk of that?"
I think the only difference that I can think of to that question is one is required by FHSAA, and one is what we're doing.
But I think that we've said we want this required, so why wouldn't it be the same level of requirement? I mean, maybe we don't want it the same level of requirement, but that's not what I've heard from the board.
I don't think that the regulations are gonna say, "You don't violate this if it's not required." It's medical information, if that makes sense to you? So if it's medical information, it's medical information. So if they are hosting it, and technically they are hosting it, so technically, what you were just saying is, is if they have the form, and whether it's from FHSAA or whatever, it's medical information, so if the AD is already hosting the athletic form, then technically they should be able to...
Isn't this just more information? It's the same level of information for me. I don't understand, I, I know we don't wanna be responsible for more, I get that, this is not education. We're diving into stuff, maybe we don't, shouldn't be, but we've decided to go there, so I feel like we should do it responsibly. We're gonna do it.
Can you check with Mark?
How about HIPAA? I guess I always get concerned about HIPAA.
I said HIPAA.
I'll leave that tonight. We're legal experts because HIPAA doesn't apply to schools.
That's...
It doesn't apply to schools.
We're not, we're not, we're a covered entity.
Okay.
So we follow firmness, if there's any medical information that we have there, we would redact any of that stuff. Because we're not a covered entity if the activity applies to this.
Good.
I mean, there's no reason we can't have the report. We're not gonna get all of the reports, and you are direct to this desk, which we're already holding some, we can hold this. The major concern is, when we're talking about this, we don't wanna have to make the medical decision, is this child okay?
I don't necessarily want the report, I want the signature from the doctor. That's what I'm asking for.
That's what we want too.
And if who we play for, that's the report that comes via email with a signature on it, that, that's what we have. But it could just be, the box is signed by a doctor, or it could be, it could just be on our yellow form, another line that's signed that says they're cleared from this.
Or attach your...
Your disclaimer note or your...
Well, it comes with an explanation of your child is deemed to be low risk, so there's, there is no no risk, right? Because nobody's gonna say, "There is no risk that your child can have cardiac arrest on the field." So the lowest possible risk is low risk.
Do we need them to reformat to say, "This kid is cleared"? Is that what we need for, for our thing?
In my mind, it would be, they would say, "The child is at low risk, and we see no reason they can't play." And it, and it goes, and there's narrative, so like, as a parent, you could potentially just print off the narrative portion of that email and submit it with your...
And that's your signature.
So we, so we don't need your whole report, but if you did it through them, you're going to need the report that,
because that's how you got your signature, basically. But if you go somewhere else, then you get an actual signature.
If that's what the report says, then the parent can mark that as cleared.
Yep.
Sign it, send it in. I haven't seen their report, so I don't know what it says, but that would be what I would need from them, is that a cardiologist said, "Your child is, is low risk, and therefore, we see no reason, or they're cleared to play sports."
Evan, what's your feedback on that?
I think we can make it out, the way it works now is, we send it all over the cloud to an expert PDF, a cardiologist, a cardiologist. They break it down into three categories, higher risk, which we've talked about, follow-up and low risk, and then we send emails that match that. I think we would need a better system to make sure that it's personalized to a parent, if that's the matter. We just have to invest in a better system.
So what do they say right now?
Evan? Why would you need a whole new system? Why wouldn't you just say, "Low risk and cleared to play sports," or something like that?
I think we might need to make it more personalized to a parent. Right now, it doesn't, for low risk, it does not say that kid's name. It says your low risk for participation. And then we get in the athletic director, or the athletic trainer spreadsheet, every kid participates.
Oh, so if you printed it off, it would, you could print that it was your...
So, and we've been a little confused on that, we've been telling them to print it, why not, bring it, turn it into, they have a spreadsheet with every kid as well.
Right. So I guess...
You just got a whole new system, and it doesn't do that?
Well, it does, we haven't, we haven't done that yet.
So, if I, I like to simplify decisions. So, basically, what we are asking ourselves as a board is, is this enough for us to say, "Parent, you had an ECG in the second box," which is gonna be the first box, right? "Completed, my child has been cleared," or are we gonna say as a board, "Prove it"?
I, we say prove it on vaccines, we say prove it on physicals. I don't, so I can't, either we don't care that they're doing this, or we, it's equivalent to having all the other things run along with your...
Thank you. So, so we'll work with who we play for to see how, how to get a personalized report, and that's gonna determine our timeline for the effective date for this policy, and we'll add some language that it needs to be attached to prove that there's been a cardiac clearance.
Because if that was through who you play for, they get that email, you can just staple it to this form, and we're good to go. So...
And we can add that to that box. Please attach...
Yep.
Whatever. Please attach that to this.
And what we'll do is we'll change this here. What says effective date upon approval, we can change that to whatever date it'll be.
Effective date when we're ready.
It's like a little bit more specificity than that.
Okay, we'll, Bill will be working on all of the communication plan as well as working with who we play for to make sure that that communication's going back and forth. And we'll have a date before the 20, we'll have that plan ready for you before the 24th.
Chris, can we please get clarification on the follow-up? That's my, I, I just have real concern there, because I feel like our interpretation of follow-up is not perhaps what the cardiologist's intention of follow-up is.
Would you be satisfied with the orig, my original intent for having the ECGs rewritten? That if the Nemours cardiologist was willing to read the follow-up ECGs and say, "They're clear," that that would give us an indication about whether or not he thought another cardiologist needed to see them?
Well, I think we have to, I think we have to understand what the cardiologist who is making the determination that this is low risk, follow-up, or high risk. What is that cardiologist's understanding of the meaning of follow-up?
Okay.
And the reason I say that is because my understanding is that that cardiologist, or those cardiologists, have said, "This kid's fine to play, we don't have any concern about this kid playing right now. We just wanna make sure that you follow up and make sure that there's not something else going on that might be more severe." But there has been no, my understanding, no restriction on activities for that child based on their interpretation. But I think it's really important that, especially if we are going to define policy based on that, that we understand what the meaning of that determination is. Because I think, for me, I think that says very different things. If the cardiologist says, "He's fine to play, we just wanna follow up," or, "This child should not step on the field, he could die tomorrow." There's, there's a big difference.
Can you give me the, Evan, do you give the name and the number so that I can call the doctor and kinda talk to all of those questions? I don't wanna... I'll give you the clarification if you're all right with you.
Thanks.
We're actually working with Dr. Delany on the 9,000 screens that we've done over the past 12 or 13 months, and we've gotten a total number that has been requiring follow-up. And we're literally in the process of calling every single one of those to find out, hey, did you follow up? Because a lot of them don't vote in Nemours to follow up. So we're calling them to find out, did you follow up, and what was the recommendation? I say there should be some caution. I'm not a doctor, but in sitting with him yesterday and going through all of these conditions, the follow-up ones are the same conditions, the hypertrophic cardiomyopathy, the WPW, ones that can be life-threatening. And if they're saying, you know, "Follow up," because, you know, if that really needs to be tested, I would say that there's a certain level of risk there that I would, but it's not my fault, I'm just saying it. Now, having said that, we should be able to present you all with that information here in the coming months so that you realize, well, of all these, I think we had a total of 350 out of 9,000 that needed follow-up. If we contact all of them, we will know what that result was of that follow-up. And that follow-up could've said, "Well, we actually gave them an ablation to treat a WPW because it was confirmed through follow-up," right?
What is that, Evan?
The Wilkinson's wife, which is the one that the kids, the seven or eight kids that have now been at the surgery. Generally, it's an ablation for that condition.
Could we also, could you also perform when you, the 300, which is a low number in many ways, out of 9,000, is amazing, but could you also supply us with how many were false positive? But I think that's important to know also.
Yep, and that's all, that would all be part of that analysis.
I'll call Dr., what's, how do I say it? Delany, I'll call Dr. Delany.
I just wanna make sure that we fully understand as we move forward.
So the form still needs some work.
I'm worried about the 13.
How's the policy looking?
Like it. Can I ask another question to Evan real quick before we go into that?
No.
Evan, is there, is there a possibility of getting somebody that could do these follow-ups to come over here to Brevard, or identify somebody here in Brevard that can, do you see what I mean? Like, just somewhere that, because, instead of us trying to send 13 kids to a location in the middle of nowhere with, you know what I mean? Anything outside their zip code, they're gonna be, not understand. Could we work on bringing somebody locally to work on that?
Yeah, there are local offices for sure, so between Melrose and O'Gale, North Titusville, and Parrish is the office. First of all, we could for sure do that, and we'll take coordinate anything with the local.
I mean, what I mean is, is these 13 kids are throughout the entire county. One's in Bayside, one's in Rockledge, one's all over the place. Can we get them to say, "Hey, Parrish, will you just cover these 13 kids? They're coming in, they need to be reviewed." Right? Okay, they're not gonna charge them?
Well, I don't know.
All right. We could try to coordinate something like that.
We called all 13, emailed all 13, and helped give them the financial resources that they needed for the follow-up. So, most likely, yes.
Okay.
And just sorry, those 13, some of them have insurance.
Yeah, I'm just trying to say, let's wrap these 13 up and get them done, because that's a big concern. I think that's what we've been talking about.
Yep.
Is there anyone here who's come to address the revisions in Board Policy 2431, Interscholastic Athletics?
Is it me? I don't know. This is your chance to talk.
Has anyone come to address the board on this policy?
Uh, yes, sorry. I, I can't make tonight's meeting, it's my son's first basketball game, so I apologize, or else that, that's where I would be. Basically, I'll try to make it short and sweet. My biggest number-one concern is, and I completely understand about the liability in the cleared and no cleared, and exactly what Ms. Sebelford's saying is, is the definition, because I'm just gonna give you my experience. I gave you a little briefing before, but the reality is, is that I spoke directly with my P cardiologist's office about this last week. And they, while the P cardiologist, coming from his standpoint, wants to see this happen, because of course, why not? You know, it is a good effort, and it's a good thing. But what is, my biggest thing is, if you do any research at all, you're really going to find out that EKGs are not diagnostic tools. They are not, every medical journal you open up about EKGs, about, and please don't be upset. I know, I am not trying to be antagonistic. I'm just saying that my three, my son's three EKGs all had three different readings. And one need out of the 12, it, all it takes is a misplacement, and you can get a great, different reading. And my two experiences with Brevard the last two years, the last EKGs, they were performed by what appeared to be like a volunteer, a volunteer. It was not a medical professional. And you're going, I have a fear that you're gonna end up with a lot, a lot, a lot of these follow-ups that aren't... You know, my P cardiologist looked at me and said, "Your first child would not look like this. It would not look like this," you know? But it's so very detailed, and someone reviewing them is not going to clear something that's abnormal because that's their license. And understandably so, like, we're not going to clear a child without a doubt, without a professional. So, you're asking a tool and a volunteer to perform and give you a report that could stop a child from participating, that my, my cardiologist looked at me, he said, "It's better than the last time I saw him 12 years ago because his murmur was pediatric, it's resolved. He is literally 110% normal." Like, there's no, I'll write you a letter right now, like, and I mean, God, thank God. But I was in shambles, I missed work, two shifts of work, $90 of co-pay, of course, this is my child's life. I acted immediately, I was on the phone with them in less than an hour. I was on the phone with Bill in less than a day. I don't play around. But I do know that, I'm a team mom of 17 boys, and the odds are, and the percentages of them coming back follow-up, these are all inner-city boys. Their parents, that's not their priority. I'm sorry. I have one like in my home on a regular. You're, you're dealing with a large percentage, and I'm not, my daughter had open heart surgery, I'm not diminishing the effort. The policy and the protocol needs to make sense. And I, you're getting into a deep water with legalities here. And the testing and the tools that are being used, they're, it's just, every cardiologist that has a follow-up is gonna be, wanna echo cardiogram. I mean, they're gonna want an echo, period, that's what they need. It's not an EKG. I'm not trying to diminish the effort, I'm just saying, this is a really scary water that you're getting into with the legality of Brevard County, and getting into P cards, which is very complicated. So, if I can help, I'm trying to help, but what I hear here is I can't. Because my suggestion to you guys, whenever I came in front of you, would have been to, and, and he brings an excellent point, is to, the non-cleared would be the high risk, and the, anything after that would be up to the parent's discretion to sign off on. That's personally, because when, when I got the clearance back, I mean, I cried. I know my kid's healthy, I know he's okay, he's asymptomatic, I know cardiology issues because of my... because of my daughter. But it still made me cry. It's emotional, it's, I, like I said, I took two days off of work. I've been, I'd spent two nights studying, you know, like trying to understand. So my point is, is it's not a diagnostic tool, you're going to get a lot of readings. He's had two in this, in a matter of months and they were completely different. And one, one could be a problem and the other one was 110% normal. So you're going to get a lot of backlash from parents that go through what I did in a matter of two weeks and their kid's been not cleared and, and then their P. is like, he's healthier than the last time I saw him. That's going to be infuriating. And I know the bottom line is these kids help, trust me, I get it. But it's a really hard thing that you guys are taking on here. And I just really, really hope that you understand the, the tools and the use and the process with the P. cards and going forward. That's, that's all I have to say.
Who's your P. cardiologist?
And I, I spoke with him specific and he's in support of this. He says, you know, Europe, it's standard. I'm like, yeah, but Europe has a totally different healthcare program than you do. So it's, it's, we're talking apples and oranges there. But he's a part of the Advent group, Gus is famous.
Is he in Brevard?
Uh, no. Well, I think he does have a satellite office with them because I wanted to get this done because my son's playing tonight. I went over to Orlando, the Advent, the hospital.
I don't think they have any here. Part 2, yeah, she can be rather pediatrician. I'm curious to see how many.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has come to address the revisions to board policy 2431 interscholastic ethics? Do I have to ask three times?
No, twice is good. You're good. Kind of coverage.
Okay, before we move on, does any of the board members have comments or questions?
I do under- I do support, I don't know her name, I'm sorry, I don't know the name, but I appreciate speaking because my concern is false positive. Because I know I would have one if I had to. I get concerned. And for the, I, I get, it's like, how do you balance it? How do you balance somebody who really is at risk? And how do you balance having people spend all this money when it was not even so?
Well, we should be able to help with some statistics on that.
I appreciate that.
In the coming months, out of 9,000, if that really hasn't been done anywhere else other than Chicago where you've got that large of the screening stuff, so we can address that.
Okay. I just want to, Mr. Mahara, since you're kind of, seem like the front lines on this, if you, don't let our kids slip through the cracks because of a policy that we've put in place that we don't know, you know, it starts coming to you, you're seeing more and more kids missing out on opportunities.
Right.
Don't just sit in your office somewhere and go, gosh, this really stinks. Let us know what's been done so that we can.
Right. And I think, and we talked a couple of weeks ago, and, and again, as a parent myself, everybody has a valid point. We're weighing, especially with those 350 kids that are yellow, and Evan and I talked today, you know, if I was a parent, or like yourself, I'm like, oh my gosh, I got to drive my son over to Orlando. So he comes out with, hey, everything's fine. My first reaction is going to be, thank goodness. And my second's going to be, who's $350? Can't he miss two football games because? So it is trying to weigh that balance of legalities, accountability, health is the main thing. And parents not wanting their kids to miss games or practices on, like you mentioned, the false positives, so it's a big rut to crack.
As a former coach and a parent and an athlete, I will tell you that the positives on this extremely outweigh the negatives. And that if I was a parent and I got a follow-up and it was that it wasn't needed, that's the greatest news in the world, right? But to know that my kid's okay out there so that they're not going to be a statistic like we've had is also, I think, far exceeds. And I would also say that in the event, when I was a coach and we had a kid that was sitting there and needed some help, I bucked up and we did it, just like you are. So like you got one of those kids on your team, those 17 kids, three of them come back, you find a way. And we had, I had kids that stayed with me during the wrestling season because they didn't have a home because their parents were out moving to other places because they lost their jobs out at the Space Center. We had fundraisers, we had everything, I mean, that's just how we do it. So I, I, I think this is a great policy.
Again, Mr. Mahara, if, you know, there's times when board members, boards make decisions and they don't realize the repercussions that happened after this, we're in new, new territory. So please be vocal and share with us how it's going as we move forward.
We can report out after winter sports, after we get all of those into our system, and we can report out again after spring sports, after we get those into our system. Typically, what happens is we have tryouts and then there's a couple of weeks later when we have everything in there and we'll ask our, our A.D.s to submit exactly what they submitted this time. How many kids? How many cleared? How many didn't? And we can track it just by the, the kids that we're targeting. So we can report out to you both for the winter athletes and the spring athletes.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay. We are going to move on to Dr. Beth Thede, Deputy Superintendent and Chief Human Resource Officer, is going to provide us with the executive summary for the proposed revisions to policy 3120, employment of staff.
This policy is being revised to clarify the procedures regarding the employment of staff to include administrators, interim principals, supervisors, and instructional staff. To authorize conditional approval by the superintendent followed by approval by the board to clarify certification requirements of certificated instructional personnel, non-certificated instructional personnel, support staff, and instructional paraprofessionals. Other changes include the revisions to the citation to the applicable federal and Florida law. And these proposed provisions encompass the suggested language from NEOL.
Is there any board member that has any questions or comments?
Thank you for fixing number 16.
I even had that printed separately to mention. Thank you, Amy, for your help.
That wasn't me, it was Pam.
Yeah, Pam wrote it.
Pam did it.
Thank you, Pam. But I had it pulled, ready to discuss it.
Is there anyone here who's come to address the revisions in policy 3120, employment of staff? Is there anyone here who's come to address the revisions in policy 3120, employment of staff? Ms. Moore, will you please provide the executive summary for the proposed revisions to board policy 5310, health services?
This policy is being revised to include the language ECG screening for additional screenings for athletic students and to include the term parent legal guardian and other changes in compliance with applicable Florida law. Particular areas of revision include the following. To include the ECG screening is a requirement for the athletic students, expand the parent term to include parent legal guardian, and the deletion of the words at registration. These proposed revisions encompass the suggested language of NEOL.
Is there anyone here who's come to address, oh, board, is there any questions or comments? Is there anyone here who's come to address the revisions in board policy 5310, health services? Is there anyone here who's come to address the revisions in board policy 5310, health services? Ms. Moore, will you please provide the executive summary for the proposed revisions to board policy 5517, harassment?
Yeah, it's a long one. The title of this policy is proposed to change from harassment to anti-harassment compliance officers complaint and investigation procedures in order to more accurately identify the purpose of this policy and its contents. This policy is being revised to restate the board's commitment to maintaining an educational and work environment that is free from all forms of unlawful harassment, to more clearly articulate the methods by which students and all other members of the school district community can report complaints of harassing conduct, to specifically identify the anti-harassment compliance officers at the school and district levels, to set forth the general investigation and complaint procedures, and to refer appeals to policy 2260.01, anti-harassment and nondiscrimination appealed procedures. Form 5517 F1, student alleged victim complaint reporting form, has been revised and shall be used for reports made by students. Form 5517 F2, parents, teachers, bus drivers, other staff witness complaint reporting form, has been revised and shall be used for reports made by other reporting individuals. Other changes include setting forth the school compliance officers and the district compliance officers, restating the responsibilities with respect to maintenance of written complaints, and other changes in compliance with applicable Florida and federal law have also been proposed. These proposed revisions encompasses just the suggested language of NEOL.
Board members have any questions or comments?
I don't remember if we asked this last time, but what was changed on the forms?
Uh, well, the forms were entirely redone. The forms originally were, there was a, one, they were individualized for different things. We've encompassed all the forms and now as part of the investigation, they have to identify what it is that, that is being alleged.
Okay.
So the only things we changed on the form? I think that was the major thing.
From the form, yeah.
Because it was, it was very confusing as to who used what form for what purpose. So this was two forms.
So either students or everybody else?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Or a victim, rather. Student, victim. Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Nope.
Is there anyone here who's come to address the revisions in board policy 5517, harassment? Is there anyone here who's come to address the revisions in board policy 5517, harassment? Ms. Moore, will you please provide the executive summary for the proposed revisions to board policy 5540?
As soon as I find it. Do you have it up there? You're going, Fred!
I don't have 5540.
I don't have 5540, it's 5517.01.
Yeah, wait.
That one's technical, you're going to be down to 10.
Here's the policy.
Six five ten.
Where'd 5540 come from?
5540 is your next, it's, it's your, it's your next, or no.
I don't have it on here.
No, 5540's not even on here.
Is it tonight?
5517, we only have one more, 6540.
5540 might be on tonight.
Whatever.
Okay. 6510 is.
Ms. Moore?
I think I'm done.
No, I have one more.
What do you have? She, I got that.
I've just given her her time. What is policy 5540? Why is it on here?
That was, that's the one that's on tonight. It's the communication with, interviews with the students by law enforcement and.
Okay. Then Ms. Zerber.
They're all from our office.
I was going to do it.
Okay. Dr. Thede, will you please provide us with the executive summary for the revisions to board policy 6510, payroll authorization?
This policy is being revised to clarify the procedures regarding salary adjustments for employees within the same salary grade of the annual salary schedule adopted by the board. Other changes include the addition of formatting to be consistent with other policies, and these proposed revisions encompass the suggested language from NEOL.
Does board have any questions or comments? Is there anyone here who's come to address the revisions in policy 6510, payroll authorization? Is there anyone here who's come to address the revisions in policy 6510, payroll authorization? Is there any other business or issues that we would like to discuss today? We're adjourned.
Oh, I'm going to discuss this.
I'm adjourned. Can you adjourn?
Man, you. She did that so quick!
Move to adjourn.
She's getting ready to start beating the children.
Just kidding, she was just joking.
Can we add something to the agenda?
Evan, open it up again for a minute.
I'm going to, I'm going to keep moving because maybe it doesn't need to be added to the agenda. You guys brought up a board discussion about the suicide awareness funds.
She can keep going, we're still recording.
Do I have to, unlike Robert's rules, what do you do?
You can, you can reconvene.
Motion to reconvene. Break over.
So.
A board discussion a couple of weeks ago, you asked about the suicide awareness funds.
Yeah.
And they were distributed to high schools two years ago.
Today is suicide awareness day, by the way, International Suicide.
I thought it was a month long.
But today's the actual day.
Oh, it is. International Suicide.
And we're recognizing another school tonight that is.
Yes, we are. Holland, Ellen, my school.
Nice.
And so.
You haven't just taken a test.
I want to thank Dr. Sullivan. Dr. Sullivan did her best to get the, the middle school funds paid for through one of the, one of our title grant programs and.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan.
Didn't, didn't, didn't work out. And then she peed.
She tried hard.
She tried really hard and that's what counts. And so I appreciate that and our team appreciates that. We did get some rollover funds from our mental health allocation last year. We had some unused funds, they rolled back over, so we've allocated that portion to fund the middle schools. But I, I did want to.
From that, they tried.
Dr. Sullivan for really trying and appealing and trying again, so. Um, this is what we'd like to put out to our schools on Monday, but I didn't want to put it out before I met with you guys to say, does this meet your expectations? Is there anything that you'd like changed or added?
So the middle schools are only this year because it's rollover from last year and this year?
Uh, we typically have rollover funds, in the time that we've had the mental health allocation, we've had rollover funds because we budget salaries and we always budget high on salaries. So there's always some funds left over.
So the rollover funds are not just from this allocation? You're talking about rollover for your whole department?
No, just mental health allocation.
Mental health, not just from this, this little line item is what I'm asking.
No.
No.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
This is the mental health allo- no, I'll just answer the question now.
I'm always in trouble when the finger comes out, so when you started doing that, I'm like, I don't know. It's like, I have an automatic, like, you know, just do, oh no, it wasn't me, she was talking to her.
It wasn't you this time. Um, and LMHC is Licensed Mental Health Counselor. Um, we have worked with lifetime counseling, they partner with us, and we have asked them if they'd be willing to come in and do some either training or lessons or working with faculties or kids as part of this, if that's what a school chose to do. So we just wanted to add it as an option.
So these recommendations for, or these authorizations for the way to use the funds, these were developed by you and your team?
Yes.
So we didn't have input from the schools as far as if they wanted.
Oh, I have to ask. I, they, typically it's Ginny Gleason and Kristen Kohler and Janine Knight. If, if nobody else, Ginny Gleason probably did, but I, I can't answer that for sure. I asked them, I tasked them with this and.
Miss Belford, they are, like, this is a pretty comprehensive list.
It is, yeah.
I can't say anything that I've heard that they've wanted.
We could add another, in case there's something that a school really wanted that because we didn't reach out to them, they didn't get to add, and then we could vet it.
Or maybe just a statement, you know?
If you've got something on your, request, don't feel like, oh, it's not on this list, we can't.
We can't do it.
Feel free to ask. They might have some amazing idea we don't know about, but that's a pretty comprehensive list.